Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Meeting, uh, regular extended meeting, um, December eighth, two thousand twenty-two with six P M. Um, board member roll call.
Angie Rawling.
Jamie Percy.
Brian Harris.
Mike Gardner.
Bob Alder.
Uh, approval of the agenda, uh, public comment, approval of minutes of December first, special select board meeting. The warrants, uh, Ellen is here with the delinquent tax collector, uh, tax sale announcement. Correspondence, ARPA discussion that was carried over from last week. Holiday and staff appreciation celebration, which was carried over from last week, old business, public comment, and adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, additions, deletions? All of them favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open it for public comment if there is any.
No hands are up.
No hands are up? Okay, approval of minutes, minutes of December first, two thousand twenty-two, special select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, additions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, warrant, accounts payable, uh, twelve, three, twenty-two, two hundred and eighty-six dollars, seven hundred and forty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, accounts payable, Newtown Hall, twelve, eight, twenty-two, seven thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents.
So moved. Pops and no.
Second. Dolly.
Uh, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
I think you gotta go around the room now, Mike.
Oh, sorry, Bob, I didn't realize you were in. I guess you guys told me that, but I was. Sorry about that. Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Payroll, twelve, nine, twenty-two, eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-one cents.
So moved.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike abstain. Uh, accounts payable, twelve, nine, twenty-two, sixty-two thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty cents.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Um, perfect, Ellen, do you wanna come up and?
You're up already?
You're up already? We're gonna fly through this tonight, I guarantee ya.
We've been moving through these meetings.
We are moving through.
You guys are amazing. So, what I'm here for, for one, is the tax sale is scheduled January third, ten A M. And, um, would like to have a select board person present for that, at least one of you, uh, to represent the town. Um, and number two, I'm asking the town to be supportive as the majority of the items that are going for tax sale are mobile homes on landed. There is no other way to.
Mobile homes on land?
Unlanded.
Oh.
Not on land. How's that?
No, I, I, I wanted to be, I just wanted to make sure.
On landed.
Okay.
So, I, I understand that we don't want to become owners of mobile homes. In, but, I also have someone that had, um, told me that she works for Brock. And Hannah was kind enough to help make up some flyers, and I put them in the bills and mailed them this month. That they can get ahold of this person, and if they're eligible for the V H A P, there's still about twenty-five percent out there, um, to help with delinquent taxes, delinquent sewer, delinquent water bills, if they're in the fire districts, wha- whatever. So, um, other bills, um, so in, in their bills that they were just mailed are these flyers. And if they didn't, for some reason, get a flyer and would like one, they can contact me here at the office, and I can get them the information. Um, so if they sign up for V H A P and they end up with a application number, I cannot tax sale them.
Okay.
Until V H A P decides if they're eligible, everything stops. Same with if somebody went to tax sale already, and they're in their year's period redemption. If they sign up for V H A P now, it stops the redemption period until V H A P decides if they're going to pay it or deny them. So they will pay the, the amount, whatever, um, our attorney gives to me, they will pay that amount if they are eligible, and they will get their, you know, they will come out as tax sales. So, so there's, I think there's like, I forgot to count them, actually, I'm sorry, I think there's eight total. One is a house on land, everything else, the other seven are on landed mobile homes.
Okay.
Okay.
So my question, the only question that I have is if we have any, and I don't know, maybe we don't have any from the past year, I don't remember any on landed mobile homes, maybe there is. Should we send a flyer to, um, the, the owners that have the year, you know, that have that year? But, there you go.
I did, because they are also eligible for the two thousand twenty-two year.
Right.
So I made sure I put a flyer in there.
Okay. I just didn't want somebody coming back, having to say, well, I didn't get that in this one.
I put.
They ever got it, but I didn't.
I put a flyer in it, you, you know, you have to live in that home in order for V H A P to
Right.
to cover you, um. How long does that usually take for them to decide? Not very long. Oh, really? Good. Yeah, and if they go through the Brock, it seems to go pretty fast. Once she, once she gets all the information, gets everything in, and, and then they need to get me the V H A P number. Because V H A P doesn't always put it on, because I, I have online relationship with V H A P. But they don't, by the time they get it posted, they've already asked me for the amount to be paid, so then I just find out. So if people do get signed up, they need to get me the number. I actually had someone give me their number the other day.
Nice.
Um, that came into, they made it, they actually came in and made a payment, and then said, here's my V H A P number, they, application number. So what I'm hoping is, with sending all that out, that some of these mobile homes that are going for sale, they will have time to get it rolling. And even if they go to sale, they'll get paid off, they'll have plenty of time.
Right.
Because it only takes the six weeks sometimes.
Oh, wow.
Depends on how many applications V H A P has.
It's the first.
It's a lot faster now. But what I'm hoping is, in the meantime, that the town supports this, because I've tried everything for, for other things, and this is.
Right.
I had to, it's not, you, you have to put some up for sale.
Right.
And it just happened this way, that this is how the bunch worked, because, and it's not including their two thousand twenty-two taxes. This is from the last list that our attorney had received. So it's, he's just playing, he's been busy too, so.
All right.
That's what I'm looking for.
So, I'll be available on the third.
What day is that? I think it's a Tuesday, isn't it?
I think it is.
Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
Then I can probably be here if I have to be here.
I just don't.
Is that Tuesday?
I just wanted to make sure that we had sent.
Absolutely, I did.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I don't want anybody coming back and saying, well, they got it, I didn't.
I sent everyone, it, it, all they have to do is read the flyer, and then go for the help, and then they will tell them how much they'll cover and what they'll do for them if they're eligible. Did I write them a specific letter? No, I put.
No, 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 no. I, I'm on my man, that's the, I'm on.
I'm just letting you know, I did.
Yep.
I made sure that that person that I know of for sure had that, an on landed mobile home that did go for tax sale in June, did receive one of those flyers, yes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, so that's all the information I have, and again, if anybody, or you know of anybody that needs that V H A P information, you can send them our way, because I have some more flyers on my desk.
Um, anybody have any questions for Ellen? Or comments? Um, excellent, thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. You too.
Never been out here this quick before, have you?
No.
Um, correspondence?
We don't have, um, correspondence per se, but we, um, Julie asked me to read this. Uh, the candidates for upcoming March election, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, they are constable for one, two-year position, delinquent tax collector, one, three-year position, moderator, one, one-year position, select board, two, one-year positions, another select board, one, three-year positions, and then trustee of public monies, we have two one-year positions open for that. So if you're interested in running, you'll need to turn in thirty signatures, um, and a candidate consent form by five P M. on Monday, January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, to Julie, the town clerk.
And those signatures, just so everyone knows, they can start, um, obtaining those signatures right now.
Right now, and they, they must be panel registered voters.
Correct.
Yes, also for a correspondence, I did get an email asking about, uh, enforcement. I think, uh, Mike, you and I kinda exchanged some emails on it as well. Um, and to put you on the spot, because I won't be able to do it off the top of my head.
Oh, it's fine.
Could you, uh, could you kinda recap what we talked about the other day on enforcement? Uh, it's the new ordinance, in, in relation to the new ordinance and in relation to litter, uh, along seven.
Right, um, which, it, it actually is gonna, um, recap all of our ordinances, so to speak, not just the litter ordinance. Um, Tara and Hannah have been doing some research on, um, there's still work in progress. Um, we're doing some research on how, when we write a violation, a ticket, whatever you wanna call it, whether it's a, you know, for, for the trash ordinance, or for the cover ordinance, or, uh, the cover ordinance is kinda a different story, because that's, that's, you know, law enforcement writes those anyway. But if Fred were to go in and write a health order, um, or, or we write a trash ordinance violation, or if I write a zoning violation, we're working on, um, how to follow through with that so that we, we can enforce those. There's ways to do it, we've, we've researched some of it out. Like I said, Tara and Hannah have been working on that. Um, we're not that far away from being able to, um, write these violations and tickets and whatever you wanna call it. And, uh, then there's gonna be some, um, as I responded in the email, there's gonna be some teeth in our, in our bite, um, you know, so to speak, so, um, I'm glad you brought that up, Bob, I, I kinda forgot that, actually, and I know we had emailed back and forth about that. Um, in the past, I don't, I think panel has had that reputation of, no matter what happens, um, there's nothing that anybody can do to us. Um, be alert, be aware, that's about to change, um, pretty soon. Um, and I know we've had some, I know we've had some complaints in, in a couple of the emails. Um, and I know we've had some complaints about certain things. Please understand that they have not gone unaddressed. Um, a couple of them, I talked to the people personally. Um, we talked, Tara and I talked about, um, going to a couple of property owners because they're rental properties. Um, and we talked about going, going, finding out the property owner for those rental properties and saying, hey, look at your tenants have got a lot of garbage around there. Ultimately, I think the responsibility falls onto that property owner, not, not the tenant.
Correct.
So, we talked about this yesterday, Tara and I on the phone. Um, I believe it was yesterday, yeah, it was yesterday. Um, so, so as, as the response to my email, don't think that we're not doing anything, um, as a board, as, as the zoning administrator, as the health officer, um, as the animal control officer, you know, maybe, maybe it appears that we're not doing anything, we are. It's just taking a little bit of time, we're, we're dealing with some, we gotta get the answers from the state government, what we need, and, and unfortunately, um, you know, we're, we're trying to do a much better job, I think, on the town government, I know we are, and we're doing a better job. Town government level wise, we're doing a great job, we're moving stuff forward. State, they're not so quick, you know, they're, they're not so quick getting back to us, unfortunately, you know, kinda what we're, you know, we wanna do it tomorrow, and they're, and they're waiting for, well, maybe next week, type of thing, so.
More like next month.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Um, you know, there's a lot of things that we're working on right now as a board, I'm glad, you know, we'll bring this up as correspondence. There's a lot of things that we're working on as a board, um, that are gonna come out, some of the executive sessions that we've had. You know, the, all of that stuff is, is definitely gonna be coming out here. Pay attention, stay tuned, folks, because it's a month away, maybe. Um, there's a lot of things that, that we're, we're gonna be able to bring out that we've been working on really diligently, and, and really hard.
Bless it.
Thank you.
That covered it, Bob, I think that covers it pretty good.
I think, I think it does. Um, and then when we get to public comment, we could get the same question again.
We could, that's fine, I'll answer them, or, or anybody, for that matter, any, we're, you know, we're all on the same page here, so.
That was our goal.
Any more correspondence?
No, but, um, just to elaborate on that, the ordinance flyers and the mobile home park flyers are all going to be printed tomorrow and be going out within the next week, so that education piece will be done, and we can move forward with other stuffs.
And that's exactly what I mean, you know, we're, all this stuff we've been working on is just, just take some time to get it done, you know, you, you do have a lot of stuff going on, on an everyday basis, and you're getting all your work done. It's just, you know, you gotta prioritize, and, and we are, and, and we're moving forward with a lot of things right now. A lot of things, we really, we really and truly are, a lot of positive things. Any more comments on correspondence? Um, ARPA discussion continued. So I'd ask everyone to come back this week with, um, three priorities that, that you'd like to see. And if you would be so kind to write these priorities down as we, as we bring them up, um, and then, I'm not so sure that we should make a decision on what those priorities are tonight. I'd like to just get them out there, and I'd like to, then, and then we can schedule, even if we schedule a special meeting just for ARPA to bring this stuff up and move it forward with what we think are the three most important things, because somebody may have something, I, I'm sure somebody's gonna have something that none of us have even thought of, I'm, I'm hoping for that, to be honest with you, so. Um, I'd like to go around the room and start with our priorities and go from there, Angie?
My number one was development of our land, a right-of-way trails, recreation use, et cetera. My second one is possibilities of our own officer, meaning a police officer or sheriff. And the third one is huge, I don't know if it's even possible, but looking at buying the racetrack and checking for a super fund for cleanup.
Oh, nice, that's something that I didn't think of.
I actually have seven, but I'll stop at three.
No, uh, we can move on afterwards, that's fine, you know, if we're, if we were short, there's, and, and honestly, there is, there's a huge number, obviously, of things that, you know, everybody has different ideas.
Um, Tara? I just wanted to say really quick that the last time I asked for ARPA money for town hall, I asked for a hundred and ten thousand, and then when I was looking at what was remaining, I thought, maybe I should give myself a little wiggle room with that. But even if I jumped to one fifty with that, we still have a remainder of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars in ARPA. In, in ARPA funds. So we're, so we know what number we're working with.
Three fifty-nine more?
Two forty-eight.
Three fifty-nine.
That's with a huge wiggle room for the town hall, because I, like I said before, I do not wanna ask taxpayers to.
Yeah, no, we're, we're in good shape with the ARPA money, and let's, and I think we're, so, I'm gonna go right to you.
Okay, my first one is law enforcement, um, either a constable or a police officer, and that would help us with our ordinance enforcement as well. Uh, the other two are really general, and I'm not sure how we would address them, but the second one is food insecurity, and the third one is housing, um, affordability, and I don't know what the appropriate word is, but just good housing, good affordable housing options.
Jamie?
Same as Angie, the first one that she had, as far as access to our land, right-of-way and all that, and, uh, also the town hall, as far as, um, finishing up the pavement, paving and other items that we need to get buttoned up. And I can't remember exactly, I talked to Tom a while back, and he had a couple ideas for the transfer station, when he gets back from his hunting trip, I'm gonna touch base with him again, but, uh, there was a couple of things he was bouncing. So.
Bob?
Well, if the numbers work out, and, uh, I think preliminarily they do, but, uh, but it really depends. Um, uh, it, I'm, my number one is the law enforcement. If we can bring that into panel, uh, into the panel, that would be, uh, that would, uh, to my view, a big plus on a lot of things, including the enforcement. Um, my second, uh, and I'm kind of, my second and third, I, I think are both about the same level to me. It's the, uh, it's the, the Vorac grant and any overages, but that may not, any overages there would probably leave us with more money left over, yeah, even if we did that. Um, uh, and that's the, the recreation access.
Uh huh.
Uh, uh, the, and the other one was to focus on, on, on capital expenditures, something that, that we would have purchased anyway. Um, and then, uh, and if we use this money for it, then it becomes a, a benefit to, uh, to our taxpayers. And I, I mean, I really wanna focus on, and it doesn't have to be a capital expenditure, I was just thinking of that, you know, thinking about Joel and trucks and plows and stuff, but it doesn't have to be that, it could be anything that we were going to spend money on anyway, would then help us with our general fund, which would be a benefit. Uh, and it wouldn't expand what we currently do, that's, I think we, uh, for me, that's gonna be one focus, is that it doesn't expand, and once the money is expired, it doesn't leave us with a liability going forward.
Right. So, what, Jamie, when you, you kinda spurred my mind on this, and Bob just even reiterated it. Um, I believe we should involve Joel, Darcy, and Tom.
I was gonna bring that up, but yeah.
This conversation, because, and that's my fault, I, I should have had them involved in this from the beginning about if they need a capital expenditure, that, that, as Bob brought up, and you, you brought it up, you know, when you, when you brought up Tom. So, I wanna publicly apologize to Joel, Darcy, and Tom, that I did not include them in this, um, little exercise, or whatever you wanna call it, um, you know, they, they should have definitely been involved, so if you could reach out to them tomorrow.
I'll just ask for their three.
Exactly, if they have, you know, a capital expenditure, whatever, so, um, you know, I think, I think that's a great idea, Bob, I just, I, and Jamie, I, I I apologize to all three of them. So, which brings me to Brian. Oh, what, Hannah? Have you come up with any? Sorry, I'm going right around the room. Okay, that's fine, Brian?
All right, uh, I, similar ideas to everybody else, uh, the law enforcement, code enforcement position. Uh, I think that would be a very valuable asset to the town, especially moving forward. Um, then a couple of selfish ideas on my, on my part regarding Route three forty-six ball field. Uh, I'd like to see the field get regraded and pitched for drainage and leveled out, especially if we're gonna start doing, uh, three-season sports down there. If we leveled it out, we'd be able, be able to do the ice skating rink a lot easier. And, uh, I'd, I'd like to try to see if we could somehow put a three-season bathroom attached to the pump house down there, like the original plan was.
Yeah, we did discuss that a long time ago.
Okay.
Uh, and then, kinda piggybacking off that, like Angie said about recreation, I had specific ideas regarding trying to do capital improvements down at the Strobridge property, at the property down by the bridge, that lower lawn area, and then also repaving the dirt road that goes down onto the bridge for fire access. I'd like to see that get paved, because that gets pretty washed out and can get pretty muddy. So, those are just some of the ideas I had.
Nice. Um, so which brings to me, which kind of piggybacks on to one of yours. Um, and these aren't in any order, just how I wrote them now. Um, emergency services, I don't know if our rescue squad or our fire departments have any capital expenditures.
They need, uh, the rescue squad has asked for a generator.
Yeah.
They're one of the only people or agencies, uh, that I've heard from requesting ARPA.
Mm-hmm, so, um, you know, our, our rescue squads and fire departments, you know, capital expenditures, you know, piggybacking on to Bob there a little bit. Um, law enforcement is, is a big thing for me, um, exactly the same reason, court enforcement, um, so on and so forth. And then the other thing that I had thought about, um, and we've talked about this as a board, was and I don't know the exact terminology I wanna use, but for some of these places that are being complained about now for trash, um, whether or not we can set up some sort of a revolving fund.
I had that down.
For some, I, I, we, we talked about this, you and I talked about this, for, for a revolving trash fund, and I think it would be a lot of research on this part. But if we, if we were to, to, um, identify a property that has a trash problem, and we go in and we clean it up, and it costs X number of dollars, then what I'd like to do, so that we recover the money, so it's a revolving thing, is, you know, we come up with some sort of, and this is, it's all hypothetical, and it's an idea that I had, and I don't know how to make it work. But I would like to, uh, to have, um, where, where we recover the money, if it costs us two thousand dollars to go in and clean up trash, because we have to hire someone to go in and do it.
Right.
All right? The, the homeowner, or whoever would be responsible to, you know, we give them, we give them an opportunity to clean up themselves, right? But then we go in, and then if they don't pay us, then we attach it somehow to, to their, to their property, you know, lean, I, I don't know how to do it, I just think, you know, just.
So there is actually a revolving loan fund currently, that I've been trying to trace back, trace back to nineteen ninety-two, and I think that's what Jim was asking about last week.
Hmm.
Um, it's been there since ninety-two, I think, I talked to my aunt, who was on the select board at the time, she said it was used one time by one resident. If we can figure out how to work that, that money, how to manage it, that is still available too, for something like that.
And, and I think that's something we should research out in our spare time.
I mean, if they have.
I know you have, I know, I'm just picking at you. I know how hard you guys are working right now, I, I know, I'm in here, I know how hard you guys are working right now.
Can't remember if they try to set a small policy for that.
I, I asked her, I, I was trying to figure out, was it select board voted, did you, did the select board at the time vote for those funds? Or was it, uh, like a ballot article?
Yes.
Because it was ballot article, then we would have to.
Bring it back to.
Another, yeah.
That's right.
Um, to do it, so I just still, I have to go back to nineteen ninety-two select board minutes, and I, I guess so.
That's okay. So, which, there's, there's some really good ideas, there's obviously some redundancy in some of them, which makes it kinda easy to prioritize a couple of the things in there. Um, I would, I'd like to schedule a special meeting where we just talk about ARPA funding. Um, I don't know what everybody schedules with the holidays, um, you know, maybe we could get, uh, maybe we could come in before the next regular meeting at five o'clock and talk about ARPA funding, you know, on, on the Thursday, you know, two Thursdays from now, so we don't take up a whole nother day.
The twenty-second.
Yeah, right before Christmas, and then we could, you know, you know, work on it. I don't know what your feelings are, I just, you know, right now I'm thinking out loud, that's all.
Oh. Every time.
If it means anything, I'm good with that scheduling. That would be the, uh, the Thursday before Christmas.
Right.
I'm good with that.
I just, you know, I'd like to schedule that meeting at five o'clock, you know, we start our regular meetings at six anyways, gives us an hour. Come in and we talk about ARPA funding and, and where we wanna go with it, and then we decide how to do it.
If we need to, we do another one, but, I mean, generally, we've been able to.
Right, we, I think we can hash it out in one meeting and get, and get started.
Get things going.
Yeah, perfect, so we'll schedule that, we'll bring these ideas back. Um, and by then, we'll have, um, Darcy, Tom, and Joel's, um, input, you know, by, by two weeks from now.
I, I think some people have also already started on getting some costs around one of the ideas that, uh, uh, that, that, uh, a few of us had mentioned. I think, uh, at, at least four of us mentioned.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we'll have some cost by then, too.
Yeah.
Exactly, we'll have some, we'll have.
That's the most questions.
And then maybe, maybe we'll have an answer on the revolving loan that we have by then, you know, if not, it's not a big deal, but, you know, and we can throw the, you know.
Right, because then that could be used for that.
Exactly, exactly. You know, when then maybe we'll have a cost on a generator for the, for the rest. You know, and then maybe we'll have a cost on a generator for the, for the rescue squad, maybe we can ask them for that. Okay?
I can't remember if it's, if it's already in state statute or not, I don't know if it's a question for our lawyer or not, or we have to come up with an, a separate ordinance on if we do like a cleanup, as far as just legally be able to put a lean on.
Oh yeah, that's definitely a lawyer question.
I can't remember exactly.
Yeah, that's way above our pay grade. Yeah, you know, just something, just something to think about, you know, like I said, it's, it's an idea that I threw out there. Anybody have anything else on, on the ARPA stuff? I think, I think we got a great start right here, and I think we'll, we'll, I, I think we'll come up with a great plan, you know, moving forward. Great. Holiday and staff appreciation celebration.
So, I'm gonna do the gift card thing first. So there's about 22 people, if I invite like Priscilla, Fred, our health officer, zoning, to include you guys and Leonard. So there's 22 people, and I'm trying to figure out gift card amounts. So if we do 25 each, it's $550, we do 35 each, it's $770, and if we do 50 each, it's $1,100. And you guys have 4,826 left in your expense line.
And do you have a, do you have some sort of an estimated cost on? Yeah.
Yeah, so I did a few different things, I did plain old cozy pizza, I did, that was, that's the cheapest, obviously, it's like $2.20. I did some barbecue, which is like $4.92, and Chinese is like, yeah, $4.08. So, it's not cheap to feed 25 people. If I, even if I set like, okay, they can each spend 20 bucks if we were to order, because Jamie had mentioned how they did that with the firehouse, they each got to order something, and I said, okay, you get $20 to order something, that's still $500. So it's, it's not a cheap thing to feed that many people, but that's why I didn't want to make the decision myself.
Do we have any sense of what the, what our staff's preference is?
Um, I've heard a lot of barbecue mostly, and then some Chinese.
That's, I think.
Because the barbecue option is brisket, it's rib, it's brisket, ribs, and chicken, mac and cheese, potato salad, and beans, I mean, it's like, really yummy. I mean, I think it is.
It sounds like you got it down to two choices, in my opinion, from people that you.
Would you just order and have it delivered here?
That you, that's what I would take.
Covers the delivery fee, the barbecue one.
Send it, send a thing out and say, please, please respond, and, you know, the more votes for either one.
Yeah, I can do that.
That's when you vote, I think that's the fairest way to do it.
Set the limit on the amount.
I don't have a problem with any of it.
My, my personal opinion is, my personal opinion is this, is a $50 gift card to each one of our employees out there, each one of the 20 people or whatever there is, that's a pretty small token of appreciation. And if it's $500 to feed everybody for barbecue, and if that's the general consensus of what everybody wants, you're still talking, you're talking 1,500 bucks for all of it. And if we can't spend 1,500 dollars on 22 people, then something's wrong, we better look for 22 new people. No, I don't want to do that, so that's my, that's my opinion.
I agree with that, because I have no problem with any of it.
You know, so.
I'll even make dessert if you want. I'll buy dessert.
I'd like to entertain a motion for Tara to continue with this holiday celebration party for our 20-some-odd employees, and she's got a down pat, I don't think we need to set a limit on it, she's not going crazy with it.
I'll second that, and I'll say that we should do the 50 to high.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I'm glad, I like that.
Okay.
Any more discussion on that, any questions?
Nope.
All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you for the research and, and the work on it, and the idea in general to start with. Old business.
I only have one thing to talk about for old business. A while back, we talked about the entryway and what it looks like, and how people enter the building, and possibly locking the doors or making our offices private, there was a lot of talk about that. I've looked at a lot of different things, and kind of, the way that it is for me, and for Hannah, and for other people that I've talked to, is okay. We don't feel unsafe, we don't feel like locking the door and keeping people out is necessary. I think we've, our community has spent a lot of money on the building, a lot of people want to see it, and they're excited to come and see it. And I feel like it's a more friendly and inviting atmosphere to have the doors open. And with that said, there has been a lot of confusion when people come in, where do I go, who's where, and all that. So Hannah and I, or Hannah actually looked up some pricing on getting some door signs, or even a sign just for next to the door. So we got two different options. There's an online option that's like three-something, but to go with Lucy, to have the matching, because she did our other signage. And she can do a directory sign out front with arrows, and then one for each door with our name and our title, for $516. So I think that would be the last piece of thing, items that are needed in here.
In the main office.
In the main office building, part of it, yeah.
Is that including a directory portion to go into the schoolhouse part of the building? And do, and the second part of that is, do we need something to direct people to that portion of the building?
Hmm, that's a good question, it does not include that, I don't think, right?
Probably only during voting.
But, right, only during voting, and it would probably only increase up slightly, because the sign would.
I think we have a sign all the way, if you're gonna have signs, do it all the way.
Yeah, if we need, if we need one, if we need one, then we go all the way and do it, that was just a question.
Yeah, we can just have it added.
Yeah, I don't think it's a huge expense, I'm sure.
And then I guess I would ask, what do we want to call that? We don't want to just keep calling it the schoolhouse, right?
Town meeting room.
Meeting room?
Yeah.
Town meeting room?
That's what it was intended to have.
I, I know that we don't have anything on the bathroom doors, but I think we should get something on the bathroom doors.
Bathroom's fine.
If the doors are shut, you don't know what it is.
Yeah, I saw people go through the janitor's closet looking for the bathroom.
I know, exactly. I mean, you, you can get those little, you know.
Yes, just simple restroom.
If you're, if you're talking about what you want to call the schoolhouse, the school, the meeting room, I actually applied for grants, calling that a community meeting space, just so you know, like we had talked about, if that's informative for you at all.
Community space?
A community meeting space, yeah.
Space, meeting room.
So it's for meetings, but also, like, we had talked a while ago, when we first was just all conceptual, you know, we were talking about allowing community groups to use it. Not just about the select board meeting there, or the boards and commissions, but, you know, about it being more than that.
I'm gonna task you two with figuring out what we're gonna call it. How's that? You got a couple ideas out there, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna task you two with doing that. And go with that. Any comments or questions on that?
Yeah, and just so, to elaborate a little more on the, the door thing, I know there have been a couple people that have said, like, you were supposed to have a counter here, and you were supposed to have, like a buzzer and some other stuff, but it really is quite expensive to install that stuff, and a counter is gonna, I don't know where we put it, we don't know how that would even work out there. I mean, then, then who sits at the counter?
I'm, I'm inclined.
Well, it changed a little bit.
My, my opinion is, I'm inclined if, if our staff feels safe and comfortable with how it's open, and that's what they want to continue with, then I'm inclined to let them go.
I've actually come into the building with one person in here, and I'm like, why isn't the door locked?
And if.
You know what I'm saying?
If I leave Hannah, I usually lock it, like, if one of us is here alone, we usually lock, but a lot of times Julie might be alone. So for safety, I figure we can get the panic buttons, because locking the door, people are gonna come in, and then they're, then they get upset. They don't usually get upset outside. You know what I mean, like?
Unless we have a known threat in the area.
Right, if that was the case.
That's a different situation, but otherwise, if you guys are all comfortable, after hours, I would prefer if one person, or even two of you are in here, I'd just soon have that front door locked after hours.
Yeah.
That's, and meaning, people, if they need to get in here, can call or set up a time appropriate or whatever. I just, piece of mind, there's a lot of wackos out there nowadays.
But I did speak for David, Alarms Unlimited, and he's gonna get us a couple of panic buttons.
Okay, good. So we need a motion on the signage for.
I thought you made the motion.
What's that?
Did you make the motion, I thought you made the motion.
Should we add a historic preservation sign for their door, or some, some type of placard that they can put their own slide in?
Maybe wait until they, maybe wait until we finalize some things with them, and then they can decide what they wanted to sign, or what they wanted to know.
We have a meeting with them in a couple weeks.
Next week.
When he walks around and saw the door.
Definitely.
Yeah, I think, I think we need a motion on the signage.
Make a motion to have Tara and Hannah move forward with the signage of rest of the office complex.
I'll second.
Any discussion, is that, are you making the motion to go with Lucy, so it matches everything else, or with the?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, just want to be clear. I don't want to assume anything, I want to know. That's totally fine, but now it's, now it's definitely out there, and there's no question, right? So the motion on the floor is to proceed with Lucy taking care of the signage for all the rest of the, of the town building as Tara and Hannah see necessary. Can I have a second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And that takes care of old business.
Any questions?
No, no, I'd like to open up to public comment, please.
I would just like to say thank you to everybody who helped with the tree lighting and who came. It was very nice of everybody, and it was a huge success, and hopefully, next year will be even bigger. Thank you, everybody.
That's, that's right. I was pleasantly surprised, I was gonna say the same thing, pleasantly surprised by the number of people that were here, number of new faces, significant number of kids out there that really enjoyed their time. For those of you who weren't here, thank you, and pass the word, I was, I'd like to see five times the number of people that were here, but it really was enlightening to see what was going on. You know, within the community. So, yeah, thank you very much for everyone who put that together.
And also, I, just to, if I could comment on that, my apologies, I had every intention of, of participating, and unfortunately, work requirements kept me from going, I'm personally embarrassed that I couldn't be there. But, but from the pictures, it looked like it was a great event. It looked like, it looked like a really nice event. We do have a hand up.
Hannah, Jim?
Hi, hi, guys, Jim Coates is Mason Hill Road North. Hey, first of all, I just want to thank you very much, Mike, for mentioning that you are working on things. I mean, town has been asking a lot of questions of if anything's been happening, and I referenced in my email to you, a couple of locations, but there are a lot of them out there that I just don't know about. Number two, the ARPA funds, I really appreciate Angie coming out with the biggest one of being the racetrack. It would be nice, but I know it's, that is not, is not feasible, but at the same time, Tara, I'm just still waiting to find out what the status is down there. We're coming into the next winter, and I know the state won't reply to me anymore, because they say that, that it's probably got to go through you guys, but unfortunately, we're not getting anything from that end, so.
Share your frustration, Jim. We all do. I do, I share your frustration, and I apologize that I don't have a better answer.
Oh no, that's fine, I mean, you, you guys are doing the best you can with a lot of things. I, I appreciate the capital fund researching with all the departments. That was one of the things I asked, if the road was all set, if there are things we could do there. Law enforcement, wow, I'd love to see us get away from the sheriffs and have a law enforcement guy in town that knows patrolling around all the different areas. And then, in my email conversation with the zoning administrator, unfortunately, it went through the select board email, and Bob, I include you on it. I, I just wanted to make sure, I, I was enlightened about permits being transferred from property to property. I mean, I, I, I just didn't know that if there was anything that is documented to say how that works. I'm concerned, and others are concerned of something that could pop up in the property next door that you don't know about. I know that, my main question with, or some people have emailed me and said, do they review the grandfathered permit that might be passed on to someone else to see if that same conditions are happening? And if they're not, if something could be rescinded? I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking about what happens when it transfers, if the following rules or follow-up is ever done. And I, I just want to make sure that we have in our bylaws and our zoning and all the rules, so that everyone knows what's happening, and things are recorded, so that nothing is hidden. I know our, our filing of items and past permits, and when zoning came about, and certain permits that were approved that may have not been under the same bylaws that we have now, but they're gonna continue on. And I'm just wondering, maybe we need to just sit down and discuss and review all of those things, just to make sure that people that invest in their property, they can know that they're not gonna have a permit passed on to the person that buys it, and then a shed goes up, and no one is checking to see if that shed was originally in the permit. So, again, it's, it's only for the idea of having a discussion, so I appreciate you guys, happy holidays, and we'll talk to you next year.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna touch base on the permit process just a little bit, I'm not gonna debate it at all, but I will talk on it a little bit, Jim, to try to explain. So, you know, because I thought about this since, since our email exchange on Tuesday. So if, if someone were to, under, let's say, bylaws that were adopted in 2010, and they were granted a variance for an outbuilding, or an addition on their house, or a business, you know, pretty much anything, if they were granted that in 2010, and then the bylaws change in 2022, it's impossible to go back and rescind, though, in my, I, I'm not gonna be the guy that goes in there and says, Tara, your house down, Jamie, because, or your addition, because now you need 25 feet for, for a variance, and you only had 15 in 2010, or, or whatever, whatever the year was. Same, same thing with a business. Now, now, I, I do totally agree that if in, we'll stay with the same years, in 2010, if you could only have seven junk cars on your business, you have a used car dealership license, and, and in 2010, you were granted an opportunity, or, or in, in your application, you were granted seven junk cars on your, on your lot, and 15 saleable cars, or, or whatever, whatever the stipulations were. If there's nine, then that's a violation.
Correct.
Then we go after it, okay? It's, it's, you know, unfortunately, I, I don't think our, and, and in, in the email exchange, like I said to you, Jim, Tara and Hannah are really diligent on working on this stuff. Unfortunately, there's a lot of stuff on their plates, and especially now, we're getting ready for budget season, and there's, there's a lot of stuff that we're working on, like I said, you know, hopefully, within the next month, most of the stuff that we've been in executive session, and, and, if not all of it, but most of it's gonna come out. And you'll appreciate the fact that we have been, we haven't been sitting on our laurels, believe me, we've been working on a lot of different things that'll, that'll come out here shortly. We've been working on a lot of different things, um, that'll, that'll come out here shortly, um. And so the permit process, yes, uh, you know, we, we do follow through on complaints. Um, we are still in the process of looking up the one, the one business opportunity, um. You know, the, that you had referenced in the email, the, the, the car dealership. So we, we definitely are researching this stuff out. Unfortunately, a lot of the stuff is packed away downstairs and it's not the easiest stuff to find or it's not really, um. They haven't had the time. I'm not gonna sit here and.
That's something, and can check with the state, cause that is given through the state.
But, but, that's right, there's a state permit for a car dealership and there's guidelines for that. But there also is the zoning permit that was given out for that, for, for a car dealership or a business or whatever. And that, that falls back on us, but the state does supersede, you're absolutely correct.
Right, and that location is not in the proper location. That is not what it's permitted for. Location that is permitted for is down the road where the sign is. That I know one hundred percent.
I don't know that for sure. I think there's, what's that?
Permit for his used cars.
But there's a sales permit for that, for that property that, that's in question, there is a permit for there.
Retail.
See, part of the problem is it's.
Definitely.
Some of these permits are so old and some of them are very vague. Some of them were given by default. I don't know what year, I'm not mentioning names, but they were given by default and then never even recorded. So we, Hannah and I have come across tons of gaps in permits that should not be there. Um, and we are working really hard to correct them, but it's.
So just be patient.
I, I don't agree, I don't agree with the permit from the zoning administrator's standpoint. I don't agree with the permit that just says retail sales for any location.
But if that's what the state does.
But if that's, but if the, if it says retail sales, I'm not gonna be the select board member that's gonna take that to court. Cause we're wasting the taxpayers' money, cause we will lose.
Yeah, that's a lot, it's a big.
That's a big permit, okay? We're gonna lose. Now, if it came to me now, as the zoning administrator and came in for retail sales, what are you selling?
Right.
What are you selling? Well, we're gonna sell retail. What are you selling? The permit that's gonna come in front of the DRB, while I'm sitting here, is gonna be a whole lot different than the one came to the DRB in the past. I can tell you that for free, so, you know.
Just, uh, thank you very much, Mike. I really appreciate it. I don't want to get in debate. Um, first of all, I think you guys just made it a point that we need to have better discussion on this and going forward. And putting it into our bylaws and putting it into our zoning and stuff. Because, um, I, your examples of just what you said of, um, if a, of the bylaws change. No, I don't agree that you go back to them and say, because the bylaws, certain things, yes, do get, um, followed through. Or continued on and stuff like that, but I mean, just to have a permit that goes forward without having someone go back from the town. To say, yes, this is what you can do and yes, this is, and just kind of review the process without just a piece of paper. Going from one person to another person and that person thinking they can do anything. But again, I don't want to go anymore on this. We just need to have better discussion on this down the road after the budget season's over. Next year or anything like that, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Any more public comment, Hannah? I will entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a great, uh, evening and if, uh, we don't see you, have a Merry Christmas.
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.